All the meeting to order at six o'clock.
Recording in progress.
Oh, that do me. Everybody rise for the pledge of allegiance. Okay, next we'll move to public comment. Any public comment for things not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to agenda review and adoption. Can I get a motion for? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll move to minutes from October thirteenth. Can I get a?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All in favor? And new business. Have a CUP for Dokendorf.
Alright, thank you Chair. For your consideration this evening is a conditional use permit and variance request. Subject property is located off of Sterling Drive. This is the area of town that we call Saint Joseph Industrial Park East. It is a area that was annexed into the city around two thousand and eighteen and was previously in Saint Joseph Township. All the properties out here along with the subject property is zoned light industrial. The proposal is to do outside storage on these two highlighted lots here. The items that will be stored outside are tied to the Beeline property off Ridgewood Road or Ridgewood Court. And future plans for this proposal do include eventually constructing a building and full site development of the site. That timetable is to be determined. The variance is to allow the applicant to install class two gravel on the surface to store the associated vehicles and equipment. Two graphics here, the one to the left shows the rough area that will be fenced in through a chain link fence. The area with the blue box in it shows the spot on the properties that will be where the storage will occur. Conditional use permit, as you may recall, the commission does have the right to recommend conditions tied to any one of these items on here. A lot of these items for this request are not applicable, but the commission does have the ability to tie any of these conditions. And some of these you will see in the staff recommendation. Staff recommended conditions of approval. Couple ones that I will highlight here is the fourth bullet point down that talks about just no junk or inoperable vehicles stored on site. We did talk to the applicant about that and that would not be an issue and that is not the intent at all for the storage of these vehicles. The storage area also, since it's going to be fenced in with a gate, we would require that DAMA box be installed to allow emergency vehicles access should they need to get in there and, you know, in case of a worst case scenario or that. The variance, so if the variance is approved this evening to allow crushed granite, that at the time a building is built or so full site development occurs and the property goes through site plan review, then at that time all ordinances and that should be met on site. Right now the property has two subject properties. Those will be combined into one parcel and that eliminates the conflict with storing vehicles and such on a shared property line and setbacks. So those two lots will become one. And then also just some various template language that we include, including revocation, expiration of the CUP and then other requirements and permits. For stormwater, we also had a condition on there tied to that they should follow stormwater best management practices. The area that they are disturbing does not trigger any permits through what's called MPDES. So it's just more or less controlling that onsite. Again, this is a pretty minimum area that they are disturbing. There is a portion of the land that's on the north end of the lot that will service as a future stormwater collection area and infiltration area when full site development does occur. Variants, just some highlights, again, this is the criteria that we look at for variances. So are they consistent with the comprehensive plan? Are they consistent with the general purposes and intent? Are there practical difficulties, including the property being used in a reasonable manner? Are the circumstances unique and will the variance, if granted, not alter the essential character? Which means will it be within, will not be able to place with surrounding properties and adjacent properties? For the variance, since the project does require conditional use permit, we have the ability to place conditions on the CUP and the variance. If approved, for example, again, the item that I had mentioned earlier, allowing class two gravel now but requiring paved or asphalt concrete surfacing once the site is fully built out with a building. Although there's no such thing as a temporary variance, variances do run with the land. So they are not attached to a particular applicant or owner. Once a variance is granted, it runs with the land. But given that we can place conditions on that variance and the conditional use permit, one of those conditions again alludes to allowing the class two gravel until that site is fully built out and developed with a building. The Industrial Park East does have similar outside storage uses around the property. Again, all this land was annexed into the city back in two thousand and eighteen and many of those existing uses were pre-existing. Just to the south and to the southwest, for example, there is a multitude of different properties that have outside storage of a even larger scale than what's being proposed here. So the actions this evening for your consideration are two public hearings. The first public hearing is for the conditional use permit. Then we would ask that the commission make a motion on the resolution. Again, you can add conditions that are reasonable onto that conditional use permit. The one note I do have is the title of the resolution. I had Summit Commons, but that should be MPBC management. So if you take up that resolution, that would be the one note that I have from a staff perspective. And then again, a public hearing on the variance and motion to approve the resolution. As with most variances that we do have, we do have another resolution should you be inclined to deny it. So that's the actions being requested this evening. I will yield for questions and the applicant is here in attendance.
Okay, I'll start. I've got a number of questions, some relating mostly to the variance. And they're pretty general questions and you guys may be able to answer for me, I'm sure you will. But the first one is the storage of vehicles. If you can tell me how many vehicles, what kind of vehicles, and are they inventory vehicles or are these client vehicles, customer vehicles?
They could be finished trailers that we've worked on at Beeline. We're limited with space we have there right now with the volume we're doing. That's why it's a very close property. We're looking, if the trailer would be finished and somebody can't come and pick it up right away, we'll probably place that out there. We're looking to store watercraft units on trailers.
When you say watercraft, storing, are these customers?
Nope, these, well, they could be both. They could be both. There's either a sales inventory on trailers or finished customer work.
But not somebody who just has a boat that they want you to?
No, absolutely not.
And pretty much limited to like?
The inventory we're selling. The inventory we're selling. Lawn mowers, watercraft. I mean, there could be a used vehicle out there, highly unlikely, but, and then finished repairs.
Okay. And I'm assuming that this is not going to be a site that you're bringing clients to. This is your own employees that go back and forth to shuttle things back and forth. And activity, about how much, how often would you guys be accessing this area daily?
I would say on a daily, yes. How often, I can't answer that, but I mean, yes, we'd be visiting it on a daily.
And, you know, we talked about your plans to build on the site. How do you plan to use it in the future? What kind of building? How soon before you put whatever building is going up out there?
I'd love to give you an answer on the timeframe. Right now I can't. I don't know. But if we do do a building, more than likely initially it's going to be a cold storage building for us, for our use. So we can keep new inventory inside, so.
But not a sales oriented type?
No, no.
Strictly storage?
No.
But no timeframe?
No timeframe on that.
I have a couple of questions too. So the site access, so the site map that you had there Nate, it showed like the fenced in area was a lot larger than the actual gravel or paved area.
Well, can I address that? The building, that, that's the building that's proposed there, not the... That blue line is proposing the setbacks on the south, west and well, the north. We're way pat, way off the property line on the north side. The back line is the one I would have a question on, reading the ordinances. Is I'm not sure, some ordinances say that back property line can be right on, the fence could be right on that property line. So I do need clarification on that.
So the nineteen thousand square feet is actually the future buildings?
That's, that would be maximum. That would be a, so.
So the which area are we talking about, paving and everything else around it or added gravel?
Just gravel in the fenced in area. So there's going to be lawn mowing around the front back and north, the front, the street side and the north side for sure. And then whatever, we're probably going to leave the fence off the back line too, so we can properly mow it.
So would that trigger the stormwater thing then, right? Because you go over a half acre?
So it's over an acre for MPDES. Yeah, so we'd still be under that and apologies for the misunderstanding error. Thank you for clarifying that, John. So I will say that we have spoke with our engineer in regards to the disturbance and everything for both scenarios, for full build out and everything. So as long as they are not directing that stormwater offsite or impacting, you know, right away areas and things like that, then that's what we're looking at at this, at this stage, so.
So there's you one driveway into the site or two?
Yes, one. Just one.
You want to be in now?
One gate, one driveway.
Questions down here?
Yeah, so, so on the, on the left?
Yep.
That you were wanting to gravel that whole lot there? The whole blue, the perimeter?
That's what I'm hoping to do. It's similar to what Tamarack did to the south there, I mean.
Okay, and then on the right would be a future, that would be where a future building? And then they would have to asphalt the, and not have gravel anymore?
So, yeah, the way that we have the condition written is that upon full site build out with a principal structure or building, that at that time, they would have to go through site plan review and then adhere to all of our requirements, including the paving and other components.
Okay, so are there storm drains in this development? Are there any?
No.
So?
No, so there's no utilities out to this development. So all these properties in Saint Joseph Industrial Park East are on private systems for septic and well.
So you, so then there isn't any runoff?
There, you had a picture, a previous picture I think I saw. If you see there, there's two, there's two stormwater ponds right there.
Yep.
And then that little one that's on the north end of the property is there's a culvert running from that one to that other one.
Okay.
Yep.
Got it.
Are there, what does our ordinance say as far as impervious surface as a percentage of the lot area?
Um, that I can double check.
Because that would be one of the questions I would have with the area, I mean, understanding that there's that kind of the drainage portion and that north flag up there. And then the access, I guess my recommendation is that access would be paved hard surface at least to the right of way line so that you're not tracking gravel and whatnot out, depending on where that access gets placed.
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, I, just from a maintenance issue.
There's a lot of properties out there that aren't that way, but.
Yeah, but they, well, yeah, and they were also built before it was an accident.
No, I got you.
Then there are no, if I'm not mistaken, there are no utility easements or anything on like that lot line that would, that lot that would be?
Uh, just on the rear.
Yeah, so just on the rear, not the lot line between the two parcels?
No, no.
Okay, so there's nothing that would need to be vacated or anything like that?
Correct. And I don't, I'm just pulling it up, I?
We lost our picture.
Yeah, I'm researching.
He doesn't want to show a screen while he's going.
So, so what entry, would you be wanting to access it off of this Sterling? Because what's another dirt road that's on?
Sterling, huh?
That's someone else's driveway?
Yes, that's, that's the Tamarack land to the south.
Oh, okay, okay.
There's a, there is a, there is a driveway right, right on the edge.
Is there an existing driveway onto these two parcels somewhere at all?
No, not at all.
So to answer, answer a question, Gina is, the impervious is eighty percent.
Okay, so that it would be limited to eighty percent of the lot area?
Total lot, total lot area.
Yep, correct.
And Nate, you did say that there were other conditions that would have to be in it when the lot is built out. And I'm assuming that would include the landscaping rules and things that we don't have to do that.
Correct, yep.
At this point in time, but they would come into play later.
Yep, correct. And from my understanding, there's no lighting that's proposed on the site. So again, that would be if there's lighting as part of that building, photometric plan and making sure that those lights are cutoff style. So yeah, it's the full site plan kind of review that Mr. Dokendorf would have to go through.
So security, isn't a concern at this point in time that will be when it's finished out?
Well, the security that I'm going, hoping for is the fence. Okay? I mean, you know, it's locked properties only for honest people anyways.
What kind of fence are you talking about there? Like chain link or what kind of fence are we?
I was hoping a chain link. I mean, we could up it to, I mean, non-galvanized, we could make it black. I don't, I mean, but it's whatever. I mean, it is an industrial. I mean, there's other chain link fencing out there.
I guess my, my, my biggest thoughts would be to work with the engineer as far as an appropriate access point for access to the, to the properties off of Sterling Drive. So that that's not in conflict with any other driveways or any other traffic issues out there. And then to limit the amount of surfacing to that eighty percent of the total lot area.
My guess is the driveway would be somewhere where that, yeah, close to the widest part there's, like where that yellow line's coming out? Just to make, just to make it easy access.
I'd be a little bit concerned with just the adjacency to the, the drive to Tamarack going there. So that would, that's kind of why I suggested working with the engineer.
Isn't there another setback from one drive to the other?
I don't think there is in an industrial. But that would be my only concern with placement of the, of the drive. I mean, it's going to be in somewhere in that wider section, just because.
It would make it the easiest, but.
Yeah, I mean, otherwise it's going to be pretty tough, but I, I think. And maybe the engineer would say it would be okay to have them basically adjacent to each other and let him make that call. Would be my thought.
Well, that wouldn't be the most convenient for us, but I'll do whatever.
Well, yeah, I mean, and obviously working with you as an applicant with future plans to potentially develop, it'd be nice to put that access point in once.
Right, correct.
And Nate, this question is, this is kind of for you. If we do pass the variance and we say you can leave the lot as it is, you know, with the crushed granite, you know, instead of putting down tar or concrete or whatever. Can we, can we, and again, because we don't know when you're going to build it out. Do we have the ability to say we can have this lot like this, like for three years? And then if the building hasn't, if there's no building going on, come back and look at it and say, okay, let's go ahead and, and put down, you know, a, a, a surface tar or whatever at this point in time. Or look at it and say, okay, let's take a look at what your building plans are. So we don't go indefinitely with this particular, you know, surface.
So what I can say to that is variances do run with the land, so there's no timetable. It's not like an interim use where we can designate a timetable to that. So I would say long as you're short, no, I wouldn't recommend that you put a timetable on it just because I don't think that would hold up. So what we did to kind of cover for that is upon full site build out, whenever that may be. And if down the road, whoever owns the property, because again, variances run with the land. So if Mr. Dokendorf for whatever reason sells it and it's, it's out there and then plans change, it would still, those conditions would still apply to the other owner as well. So if they come back with a different plan for a different building or whatever, a different way to develop the site, it would still trigger that to come back. And if they didn't want to do that, then they'd have to request an amendment to that conditional use, so.
You know, so if we go ahead and approve the variance and Mr. Dokendorf decides, I'm just going to leave it, you know, like it is and I'm not going to build a cold storage building on it, I just want to leave it. And the other people around him are building nice, you know, buildings with nice tarred surfaces and their lots are done. This one would stand out then as being different. And I'm, my concern is, would we, you know, we, obviously, we wouldn't have the ability then to say, let's get this paved now. Because it's out of sync with everything else that's going on. If that were to happen.
Yeah, yep.
I have a couple of questions. So what is the reasoning for wanting to do?
We need the storage because we've grown at, we, what we've done at Beeline have grown and that's not a big enough area.
But with not wanting to do full pavement now and just the?
The amount of dollars that we've already spent on the Beeline project, I'd like to catch up.
So then I guess for the commission, I just want to point out in our packet, Nate does have it pointed out under variance criteria. To keep in mind that the in harmony with the ordinance and then also economic considerations alone should not justify practical difficulty. Any other questions? Comments, discussion?
No, I'll add one quick note to this. I know one of the, at least in our conversations, correct me if I'm wrong, is part of what you also were looking at with this project was the unknown on how that building would play out and how that building, like how big, where exactly it'd be placed and things like that.
Correct.
So, because when we had initially spoke, that was the exact question I had was in terms of like, why class two gravel? Why not paving it? And that came up in our conversations was you wanted to do that now because you weren't sure how the site was going to fully develop.
Correct.
So to put in paving.
And then rip it out and then pay for it again.
Yeah, yeah, but I just wanted to add that, but.
We allowed, we've allowed that before, right? Class five and class two as a?
Oh, yeah, so, yeah, so every variance is unique. And every variance should be reviewed and applied per the ordinance and statutory requirements. So I know it can be easy to compare like one project to another to another, but I would keep that in mind first. The second one is, yes, we have had numerous variance requests for doing gravel on sites. A couple that I can provide, for example, is Summit Commons off the Wobegon Trail was just outside storage out there. Their Hanson and Company, the rear of their building, a variance to do class two gravel. Rolling Ridge had a variance to do grass surface. So there's been numerous ones, but again, every project is unique and different. So I don't want to shine a light on those necessarily and say just because those were granted there means that it should be granted here. You should evaluate this one on its own because it's unique for that, so. I will say if the city continues to receive variance requests for certain things, that I would recommend a larger conversation occur in terms of the ordinance that people are consistently requesting variances to. Because we don't want to be in a situation where we're just granting variance after variance for the same thing. So that's my two cents on that.
If, if the city were to require a hard surface paving, assuming it's concrete, is there a criteria as to what that pavement section would be? Or is it up to the property owner as to what they've put down? Because I'm, I'm envisioning, you know, if you don't know what the plan is, I'm envisioning the ability to go in and put down an inch and a half of blacktop over basically existing soils. It's going to get beat to heck when you're driving on it and it's going to look worse than gravel. So I, I, my question was if there's a section that would be required or how that works?
Yeah, so great question. So we do not dictate that. The only time we dictate that is if it is any kind of public roads, streets, access points. So, no.
Alright, so we should probably open the public hearing at this point?
So we'll go ahead and open the public hearing for the conditional use permit. Seeing nobody, I am going to close the public hearing. Then we'll go ahead and, do you want, should we motion on that one and then move on, probably?
Yeah.
Yeah. So need a motion to approve the resolution, PC twenty twenty five zero six, adopting the finding of facts, recommendation, the city, recommending the city council issue conditional use permit with conditions. Did you want to add those? The access paved hard surface and have it listed to limit eight, to eighty percent lot area per ordinance?
Are you making the motion or? Are you making the motion?
I'm asking.
Oh.
If that was for the CUP or if that was?
It should be for the CUP, right?
I think so.
Yeah, uh, yeah.
Correct.
We could tie it into the if the variance is approved. Because number eight on the criteria talks about the present proposal consists of gravel surfacing which requires a variance. So, yeah, would that be on the variance or would it be on the conditional use?
So I would say that would be on the conditional use.
Okay, probably on both in reality.
You could, yep, yep.
So I'm looking for a motion.
I would make a motion to approve the conditional use permit application for outdoor storage with the conditions listed in our packet. In addition, if it were to be, you know, if the variance is approved and there's the gravel surfacing is allowed, that be limited to eighty percent of the total lot area per the ordinance? And in addition, the access be?
Paved?
Well, on a typical site, you would locate the access with a development plan. Access would be coordinated with city and the engineer and would be paved to the right of way. That's what I'm going to, that's just the motion, in addition to the other conditions in the, in the resolution.
Just an offset. Class two's acceptable, eighty percent max volume. Figure out the driveway thing.
The conditional use is for the use of the, of the area as a parking. So the CUP is just for the parking right now with the condition? With the condition that we're adding the access.
Variance is the class two question, yep, yep.
So that comes up later.
Yep.
I'd second it as presented.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, CUP passes. We will open the public hearing on the variance. Please come forward if you have anything to say. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing on the variance.
I will make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five zero two seven A. Um, adopting the findings of fact to approve a variance to the minimum parking lot standards. Uh, allowing the crushed granite surfacing, limited to eighty percent of the total lot area per the ordinance. And that would be it, I believe it is.
With the, with the conditions that are outlined in the?
Yeah, with the conditions that are outlined in the resolution. I believe it's consistent with the area and all the other things listed in there. Sorry.
I'll second, I'll second that.
Aren't you gonna be glad to get rid of me?
I'll second.
All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye. Motion passes. So, looks like we're on new business C data centers.
Alright, so, I'll make this kinda quick. So, I just wanted to plant a seed in all of your heads that I would like to, provide time allows for, look into data centers and researching data centers. Right now, our code is silent on that use. There's a couple uses that we list in our industrial park that maybe we could stretch as similar, but I would side on the side of no. Um, that we would and should look at establishing a regulatory framework on data centers. It's gonna be quite rare that St. Joseph would be a ideal location for numerous reasons. Um, the biggest is data centers require a extraordinary amount of water and sewer use. Um, specifically water, um, oftentimes even their own treatment plant on site. Um, you're talking about millions and millions of gallons. So, um, even though we might not be a ideal location or a low hanging fruit for one of these, um, having that regulatory framework in place, I think, sets us up well and puts us in a proactive stance versus reactive stance. So, uh, over the course of twenty twenty-six, as time allows, I'll probably be trying to share some research on how other communities handle data centers. Again, a data center is a large complex that's really meant for storage processing and computing for things like AI, um, and that. So you'll often see Google, Amazon, companies like that. Um, again, if you have followed any of the news articles on data centers, um, there's numerous ones that have popped up throughout the state, um, often with a lot of controversy tied to them. Um, in particular to their potential impacts to adjacent properties and such. Um, or on city utilities. So, um, I'll pause there, but it's really just FYI and planting a seed in all of your heads. If you really wanna look into data centers, it's an interesting topic, but, yeah.
Sounds good. Okay. Then I guess we'll move on to new business, letter D, comprehensive plan.
Alright, so, we're gonna go one by one and on every single strategy and goal in our comprehensive plan, are you ready?
Why? You're being serious?
No. We're not gonna turn this into a three hour meeting. Come on. Clear and concise, that's the goal that I, I strive for. So, what I do wanna do though, is we have about six chapters and I just wanna put a highlight and put an area of opportunity for each of those chapters. Stop me if you have questions, I did include all the strategies and goals in your packet. So, um, I just wanted to highlight, to first, again, put the comprehensive plan at the forefront that this is a document that is a living, breathing document that we are applying. Um, and many of the departments are, oftentimes without even, you know, really recognizing that. So I like to first recognize that, uh, work that we are doing.
And what is it due for an update?
So, it's, yeah, so since we're greater Minnesota, it's not a mandatory update. Um, if you're in the metro, the seven county metro area, it is a mandatory ten year update because you're tied to the Met Council and the Met Council requirements. Um, in greater Minnesota, we still strive for every ten years. So our last one was twenty eighteen, so kind of insane to say that we're already approaching that in a couple more years. Um, so we've been putting away dollars in our budget to plan for that. And then, um, with the goal of doing that, um, within the ten years or so, so.
I will say that the process last time, I mean, was really good. I, I, the, the consultant we had as a city was, they did a nice job with it, I thought. They put together a very, a plan with longevity, I thought.
Yeah, yeah, and it's actually really cool because one of the gentlemen that worked on that plan, um, that was involved, I actually run into him pretty frequently at different conferences and that. Um, and still recalls working in, in St. Joseph and very fond memories of that plan and that, so. Um, so let's just dive into this real quick again, I'll try to be clear and concise. So, um, in our land use chapter, one of our goals and strategies is promote redevelopment and infill in the downtown. Um, there's numerous projects over the last number of years that have pointed to the success in that. You know, especially, specifically along the Birch Street corridor, the House Food and Tap, where we took an old dilapidated site, turned that into new. Um, an area of opportunity though, is community gateways. So we have in our budget, um, community gateways, um, to do new signage at these gateways. Now that we have our first roundabouts in town. Um, we have reached out to the county in regards to what they would allow in that. And it is pretty flexible, all things considering for the county level. Um, so that might be something that we look into more in the next year or two, is enhancing those gateways and beautifying those gateways. Um, making the entrance into St. Joseph, um, welcoming on that. Housing, we have a strategy encouraging rehabilitation of homes. We got what's called a small cities development program grant that will fund about ten to twelve properties in town for owner occupied housing, where they can do things like windows, doors and siding improvements. Um, an area of opportunity, um, so one of our strategies was tied to accessory dwelling units. Um, we talked about how do we create more housing opportunities in town? And how do we work on those infill areas where we already have water and sewer and utilities? That could be an avenue, especially when we talk about the core downtown area, that maybe that's a potential. Um, transportation, uh, just identifying pedestrian and bicycle transportation gaps. We updated our transportation plan in twenty twenty-two and we determined our top trail and sidewalk projects as part of that. Um, whoever was on the commission at that time, um, you might recall some of, uh, the work that we did on that, along with park board and council. And then an area of opportunity is, we have a complete streets, um, goal. Um, and that means complete streets, designing all streets for all types of users, bicyclists, pedestrians. Um, so we could look at maybe adopting a complete streets policy that just cements the vision and goals of the city and making it our transportation network as inclusive as possible to all users. Economic development, um, I get through the supporting redevelopment in downtown as a highlight and a win. An area of opportunity, we've talked in the past about having intern and, um, you know, liaison on the board. Um, so we are working on that. Um, I'm actually working with our park department on a potential intern that would be a CSBSJU student who would help the park department and the planning and community development department, so. Parks and Rec, um, provide a trail and sidewalk system that connects natural environments of the city. Rivers Bend Development, south of town, we completed that project this year with grant money. Um, that was just south of a million dollar improvement down there. Um, an area of opportunity is also that same goal and strategy because we have that beautiful trail, but we do not have that trail connected to the larger trail system. And I'll talk more about that in my general updates. Um, sustainability, um, we talk about new developments conserve, conserving water resources. Um, the recent project that was approved by the council and acted on by the commission keepers, that did provide an opportunity to capture some of the city's future stormwater needs and, um, future stormwater, um, you know, concerns through the dedication of an outlot. Um, thus saving the city, you know, not just money, but also saving the city, um, in terms of the stormwater capacity along that corridor. Um, area of opportunity, I'm looking at incentives for, uh, different energy efficient designs and construction. Don't know how that would play out, but, um, some communities do, um, provide some incentives in that wheelhouse. Uh, I think this is the last one. So, um, community engagement, continue, we really have amped up our social media usage. Um, from, uh, mo, all of our departments, um, especially Parks and Rec and that. So just continuing to use that as a way to streamline information. An area of opportunity is kinda similar to one of the previous ones is, um, this one specifically speaks to youth participation on advisory committees and city boards. Um, so we talked about this some years back in the past, about maybe having a liaison from the college on the planning commission and that. Or have a role, um, on our various boards and that. So, that's it, just four slides, five slides, I think, so. Um, I'll yield if you had any questions for me, or if you saw anything that popped out in the comprehensive plan that you're like, hey, what are we doing in this area or what can we be doing? Um, just let me know either now or offline or whatever, so.
Any questions, discussion? No. Okay, we will move to new business E, which is twenty twenty-six land use, Seminole deadlines.
I just need a motion on that Seminole deadline calendar for twenty twenty-six.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Um, moving on to number seven, old business zoning amendment for tattoo shops and definition for beauty salons and tattoo shop.
Yeah, so this follows the conversation we had in the past, a few months back here. I just included the language on, one, how we would define a beauty salon and then how we would fi, define a tattoo and body art. Um, so just zoom to that. I just wanted to provide this ahead of time, cause I would anticipate that we would move forward next month with a formal public hearing, um, to update the ordinance. Um, you'll recall, we had a request, um, tied to this and we didn't have a definition for what is a beauty salon. Um, so we threw those two definitions in here and then also added it to the permitted uses, um, right here, um, within our downtown district, which would also mean that it's a permitted use in our highway commercial district. So, I'll yield for questions, yep.
No, I was.
Um, beauty salons, we talked about barber and beauty salons, are they? And, and then we talked about the tattoo body art and the tattoo body art says licensed business? The beauty salon and barbers, are those required to be lic, are those required to be licensed or?
So, um, not through us, we don't require a license, um.
So. This, so we don't require a license for them, but we would for, uh, we'd have a separate city license for?
Tattoo, correct, yep, we actually do. So we actually have, yes, so this is the unique component. So we have a license application for tattoo, um, but we don't have any tattoo. And our code is silent on that use. Um, it could be potentially implied that that falls under the Barbie, barber beauty salon, that's the closest use. Um, but in our last discussions, we wanted to more or less clarify, um, cause it can be a stretch to include that. Um, so let's define what a beauty salon is, let's define what a tattoo body art place is, let's put it in there, let's make it clear.
Yep.
So.
Um, and just tattoo body art, or is there a need to put something like tattoo body art studio, salon, whatever, I mean?
Um, yeah. It's a, that's a good question. Um, so in the research I did, a lot of cities use what is proposed, um, or something very similar to that.
Okay.
Um, some just have body art establishment, some just have tattoo.
We're good.
Yep, yep.
Okay, those are my questions so far.
Yeah, and that fits with what I was gonna ask, cause I was just checking on the licensing requirements for a tattoo par, they do need to be licensed. And we don't need to make that specific here because we've already got it written into the code.
Yep, we already have it in the code, we have a license application, we have it in our fee schedule, we have all the bases covered, but we gotta go back to the zoning. Yeah, so, a, a, and I, I don't know, I mean, some of you may, can speak to this more than I can, if you have the historic knowledge of the community and the last time maybe a tattoo place was in town. I don't know, I don't, I can't answer that. So, I would assume that at one time there was, cause we have a license application, but I could be wrong, so.
Not my last twenty years that I can remember.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So. With this and how specific our definition is, in general, tattoo shops generally do like piercings? Is that going to be kind of included with the body art part or not included at all?
Correct, so we reference like needles and such, um, in there, so, yes, we would include that, we would consider, yeah, under that, yep.
Okay, cause it specifically under the definition does state, provides permanent tattoos and makeup.
Mm-hmm.
Using needles and ink.
Yeah, yeah, so.
So would we wanna include?
Just add the word piercings to it?
Piercings.
Of some sort?
Y- yeah.
Could we go body art instead of piercings? Cause I think piercings, you're gonna get into like a.
Wider.
Yeah, I think if you go, if you just consider it as body art. I mean, if you go licensed business brands, permanent tattoos and makeup, or permanent tattoos, comma, makeup, well, permanent tattoos and makeup, comma, and body art to clients using needles and ink.
And body art includes piercings?
I would, I would, I would define, I mean, I would say the body art.
Body art would include any modifications to your body, so it could, I mean, like, painting, I mean, could include, yeah. Yeah, yep, yep, so, yep.
So that's not too vague, is what you're saying, is the definition?
I don't think so, um, I actually, I, I conversated with the attorney a little bit, um, in the early stages of this. I don't think she's seen this exact definition, but, um, yeah, it, um, you know, we could add, if the commission wants to add additional verbiage, but I think that this would cover us regardless for those other types of use. So it's really any, it's really any modification to a body, you know, whether it's art or.
Does the licensing document reference that?
What's that?
The licensing, does it reference body art, piercings, that kind of thing?
It's just, uh, uh, that's a good question, I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah, cause that's kinda my sub-question then is, are we gonna run into a problem with that with?
Yeah, cause I wanna make sure that the licensing includes that. If you're gonna do tattoos and you're gonna do body art.
Then you should also be licensed to do.
If there's gonna be piercings, you need to be licensed to do all that kinda stuff for infection purposes and things like that. I wouldn't feel safe going in and having my ears pierced.
I mean, I'm assu, I'm assuming the state has.
I, I would probably have to follow up on that, um.
I mean, I'm assuming the state has requirements for all of those as well.
Yeah, so I mean, any state requirements, regardless, they'll have to meet those and, and follow those.
I would say just making sure that this, the ordinance language is consistent with the city's permanent, or the sys.
The license, the license application?
That's the words. That's the words.
I don't, so I know it's in our fee schedule, I, I don't see it within our license folder, so. It might be one of those instances where we have a fee tied to it, but I don't know if we have an actual application created. I'll double check though.
I mean, whatever the language is, I think just to make sure that it's consistent between the two, if there are, would be the, the biggest issue.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay.
Are you looking for anything on this or just feedback?
No, um, just feedback because I would intend for next month, um, to bring this back and then do a formal public hearing.
Any other discussion on that one? Moving on then to, can we do gen- old business general updates and other business general updates at the same time?
Yes, let's do that. So, keepers broke ground, so last week or the week before now. Um, so they did, um, they'll be constructing over the winter here, um, on their forty-two unit apartment project over there on the east side of town. We are looking at applying for what's called a TA grant. So a TA grant is a transportation alternatives grant and will likely be targeting the trail that would connect Rivers Bend Park to the trail on college. Um, it would meander through portions of Kennedy. Um, so we have a couple, um, conversations to have. A few years back, we did have some conversations with the school district and they were supportive of that. Um, but there's been some leadership changes and such too, um, but we're looking at targeting that. Um, and we might have a resolution for the council to consider next week in terms of submitting a full application for that. There was an email that I sent off in regards to a award that a project got in the city. So if you have an interest in attending that, you can just attend the luncheon, um, and be there for that. Um, so just let me know. And then also I've been working on planning for what's called our connecting entrepreneurial communities conference. This is the conference that is run through the University of Minnesota. And I pulled together a local team to help plan for that conference. It will be September seventeenth and eighteenth. It's a Thursday and a Friday, Friday is typically half a day. There'll be a total of sixteen breakout sessions. Those breakout sessions will be held in businesses in mostly our downtown district, but then also, um, a couple outside of our downtown district like industrial park or highway district. Um, so we'll have shuttle services for those ones that are offsite. Uh, about a hundred and fifteen, hundred and twenty-ish people is usually the attendance, but we, our local team is super enthusiastic and we wanna shatter every attendance record and just get it, the word out there. Um, so it, it's, it's gonna be exciting because also in the past, this conference has been more geared towards like professionals and like the economic development realm and such, but we are opening up that, um, where we wanna have heavy attendance with entrepreneurs. You know, entrepreneurs that are new, entrepreneurs that are seasoned, and we really want the whole ecosystem of the economic development realm to really be in attendance there. We want economic development professionals, we want entrepreneurs, we want resource providers. Um, like the small business development centers, we want a full gamut of representation. Um, so we'll be able to highlight our community and the different venues that we have and, um, places. So, if you want more information on that, um, I can share that. And then next month, um, I would anticipate that we'll be getting a application, we're supposed to get it this week, um, for the monastery. Um, so they're gonna be, um, you know, building new and such. I anticipate that we'll be reviewing a preliminary plat for that. And there's also a couple lots that are part of that site that are outlots, that are zoned differently. They're zoned R1 single family. Um, so, the replat is kind of a consolidation of those lots, expanding those into one lot. So that will entail not just a preliminary plat, but also a rezoning application and such too. So, um, just a heads up on that. I'm done.
Can you send us the conference information?
Yeah, yep.
Anything else, anybody going once, going twice? Okay. All in favor?
I don't know, this monastery, I don't know anything about that.
Recording stopped.
I'm not that familiar with their, their whole campus, so.
We're kinda what the community gardens are? Back at like Torrance ninety-four and like empty field parking ride?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That and the barn that was there.
Yeah, they took that, I didn't even notice it. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's changing like everything else.
Yeah.
Good job, Mrs. B, good job.
I'm sorry, I, I, I forgot how to talk today, I got like language issues. Yeah, I know, you, you, that's all.
I'm better at providing commentary than I am writing it.
You did just fine. Gina, it's been great.